Paul Frufalja. Where's Mike? Is Mike there? Oh, Mike got to start it. He's here, but I don't know where he went to. And the candidates, Mike Donofeu here? Oh, he's here, George. I know I saw George walk in. I know I saw George. Really? Is this starting up again? I'll wait his name and see if he shows up. Because I want to introduce the candidates. There's Mike. Mary Kruger's here somewhere. I know I saw her. Somewhere back. That's Mary Scanlon. Over here. Oh, yes. Okay, there she is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Who showed three, four rows back between Taylor and that new guy just turned on. Right there. I see him at Sacred Heart. He comes in. There's George. He's over here. Okay. Is it hot in here? Is it me?
Got the fans going, though.
Oh, they're gonna pick up? They're not gonna pick you up, are they? You might want to tell her, you at this mic. Because she clipped it to that mic. Yeah, I got the name here. I just want to see who's here. I've been doing question and answer.
Oh, I mean now.
After he's done, you want to say something? You might do. You could get on the second mic.
That's what I was asking you.
Yeah, but if you stand, you're gonna block the view of the screen from somebody. And she gets the microphone. Yeah, you could, as long as the cord goes that far.
Probably don't even need to move too far away from the tape.
I go to see if you can see this side. There you go. It's on, I think, here.
No, but I want to know how far I can get.
See if you hook this thing we got.
Is that as far as it goes or not?
It's fine, though. Yeah, no, I'm good. It's fine.
That tangle of cords.
You're okay with that, right?
And do you, do you want? Thank you. Statement after God's face. Okay, so you, you want to speak? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna... They do these introductions. Ready, guys? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the budget hearing for the 2018-19 budget. Would you please stay in and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag,
To the United States of America,
And to the Republic for which it stands, One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you for coming. I want to do a few introductions before we start. Current Board of Education members that are here, George Harrington, Paul Frufalja, Mary Scanlon, Aaron McDonald, Mike Marizio. And candidates for the Board of Education include Paul and George, along with Mike Leon, who's unable to make it. I know Terry Kruger is here, right there. Candidate Mark Thorne, there. And I did not see Mike Donofeu. I don't know if he's here this evening or not. So those are the current and candidates for the Board of Education. The budget will be presented by Superintendent Annette Speech and Associate Superintendent Don Keegan. Following the budget presentation, we'll have a question and answer period. I would ask you at that point, when I call upon you, to come up to the microphone at the select turn, identify yourself, and ask you a question. This is all recorded, so we need your voice on the microphone to make sure everybody can hear it. So we'll turn it over to Annette and Don for the budget presentation.
So, good evening. This year, we're starting our budget presentation with photos of students because that's what it's all about. It's about the opportunities that we're able to offer and provide for our students. So the first four photos have to do with STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. In the upper left-hand corner, we have the hydrogen fuel cell students who take a course at the high school, and they work on building a hydrogen fuel cell car every year. And we have not yet been able to publicize this, but last week, when most of the students were on their spring break, we had one of the fathers volunteer to take a week's vacation to tow the car that they built all the way to California. And this is all funded by businesses and corporations. And I'm very pleased to say that our students took first place at the national competition against many of them. And they competed against many students at the college level. And they qualified to go to the international competition in London, although we're not sure how we're gonna fundraise to get them to London. But quite an accomplishment. On the right, we have some students, middle school students at a science fair. In the bottom right-hand corner, students engaged in an after-school coding program. And we have a teacher on special assignment coaching a youngster in the bottom left. They are a group of students from Gillette Road Middle School and also Roxboro Road Middle School students who are involved. And they won quite a prestigious award by the New York State School Boards Association this past fall. So we're very proud of them as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Keegan for a few minutes, and he's gonna talk about the agenda and our budget.
So let me apologize in advance for having my back to you. I'm gonna stay here and click through the slides. We're gonna, the rest of the presentation's pretty traditional. We're gonna talk about our revenues, our tax levy, our expenditures. And Annette's gonna take us through some program initiatives. And then we'll talk about buses and fund balance and the rest of the budget process, vote, and election. So one thing I want to bring to everyone's attention is that North Syracuse is one of the larger districts in New York State. We're definitely a top 20 district out of 677 districts in the state. We're the largest suburban district here in central New York. And our budget for next year, proposed budget, is $163.2 million. And you can see from this chart that we're very dependent on the tax levy revenues and the state aid revenues. That's the blue and the green pieces of the pie on this chart. As you can see from this chart, comparing our '17-'18 numbers to the '18-'19 numbers, we got a reasonably good increase in state aid, general aid, this year, a little over 3%. I suspect that's because it was an election year, but we are, we're pleased to have that increase. We are still significantly underfunded in terms of our foundation aid, which is something that we continue to discuss. And I'll talk more about that in a later slide. Overall, the revenues for the district are up $4.5 million, or 2.84%. As most people know, New York State has a tax cap in place. And North Syracuse has lived within that cap every year since it's come out. The tax cap calculation is here in front of you. Our 2017-'18 tax levy is the $85.2 million at the top of the chart there. The tax cap calculation is primarily driven by the allowable levy growth factor. That's the line right in the middle. Districts are allowed to raise their tax levy by 2% or inflation, whichever's less. And the CPI for this year was 2.13%. So since 2% is less than that, we're increasing the levy by 2%. The other factor that's unique to North Syracuse is that we have a large geographic area we service, and our tax base has been growing. The logic is that school districts can increase their tax levy by the amount of the tax base growth factor. And that was 1%, as you can see in that line item. So if you take the 2% and the 1%, it's almost, it's 3%. And the calculations here yield a tax levy limit increase of 2.94% or $2.5 million. That represents about a $70 increase on a $100,000 home before STAR. So we have three towns in the, in the, in our school district, Cicero, Clay, and Salina. Regardless of which town you live in, if your house has a full value of $100,000, your school tax will be estimated at $2,436. Again, a $70 increase per year before STAR. This chart shows you our history of projected tax rates versus actual tax rates. And I want to explain this, that we make an estimate at the time of the budget because the appraisals of our property in our district are not complete until the summer after the budget's approved. So the information that we're presenting tonight is based on the tax base or appraisals from last summer. So last year, we told you that your tax rate would go up from 23.88 by 3.02%. That's what the projected tax rate would be, 23.88. And instead, it went up 2.03% or less than we projected. And that's the case for the last five years. And the reason for that is that our, our tax base has grown each of the last five years. And we spread the entire levy, the $87.7 million, over the entire tax base. So we don't get, if there are new homes in the district, we don't get any more money. We spread that levy out over the, over the entire tax base. And the tax base growth factor is intended to compensate for that. Continuing on, talking about tax rates, our tax rate on true value is a, an easy way for us to compare our taxes to the towns around us. So North Syracuse is the green bar on this chart. And the other 22 central New York districts that are part of OCM BOCES, they're listed here as the other bars on the chart. And you'll note that the, in 2017, the tax rate on true value for North Syracuse was $23.18. The median, the middle group of schools, is $23.35, and the average is $23. So I'm not using this chart to illustrate that our taxes are too high or too low or just right, but to show you relatively where the tax rate is for North Syracuse relative to other districts in central New York. Our budget is balanced. Our expenditures are also $163.2 million. And we're a people-based business. The most important thing we do is put adults in front of children. And therefore, most of our expenses are the blue and the green part of the pie chart here that indicate that we spend most of our monies on people costs. We also spend a lot of money on debt service. That's our mortgage payment, about $9.7 million, or about 6% of our budget. We spend about 9.5% on BOCES, where we purchase technology services, special ed services, and a variety of curriculum and other, other services critical to the operation of our district. And then finally, I'll point out that we, once again, are doing a special project. We do a special project each of the last, we've done one each of the last four years for security reasons. You may have noticed that we've built out the lobbies in our secondary schools, the high school. We just finished the junior high or in the process of completing that process. We did Gillette Road, and we're gonna do Roxboro Road this summer. And those provide a more secure single-point-of-entry. So we'll use this $100,000 probably to focus on elementary school security in the future. Comparing our expenditures year to year, you can see, again, that our expenditures are up $4.5 million. Our biggest increase is with salaries. Our bargaining units got a 3% increase this year. But you'll notice it went up slightly higher than 3%. And that's because we have been adding additional headcount in connection with our, our new inclusive special ed model, our English language learners. And our superintendent speech is gonna talk more about some of the initiatives for this year. But the increase in headcount pushes the percentage up slightly. We're also spending more money with BOCES. Again, a 2.84% increase in expenditures year over year.
So I'm gonna speak about some program initiatives. And I think that many of you in this room, looking around the room, are familiar with our Vision 2020 and how we have focused areas that we hope will accomplish our mission and our vision for the district. And we, we use that this year in putting the budget together as a roadmap or as a guide. And it helped us focus on what our needs really are for students. And so this budget, we're, we're proud of the fact that we're able to expand course offerings for the seniors at Cicero North Syracuse High School. Many of you may not realize, but a third of our seniors right now, and for the past several years, they either arrive late or leave early. They do not attend school for a full day. And they've only had to take a minimum of five and a half credits. We're raising, with this budget, we're raising the minimum number of credits for seniors to six credits. And we're expanding the course offerings, which will allow them a more rigorous program and also allow them to explore areas of interest prior to deciding what they want to do when they get to college. So we're really excited about that. Also, we're, we have a slight staffing increase for the junior high school so that all students will have the opportunity to take art, health, and family and consumer science. And we're adding some, a small amount of staff to the junior high school so that the science classes are a reasonable size for lab work. In addition, one of our focus areas over the last two or three years has been a more inclusive approach to educating our students with special needs. And we have, we will continue to monitor and adjust the need for special education teachers and teaching assistants. We are also experiencing an increase in enrollment at Gillette Road Middle School. So we needed to add some staff for the four core areas, English, math, science, and social studies for 7th graders at Gillette Road Middle School. And again, this budget has some additional resources to help us focus on safety, security, and mental health, well-being for students and staff. Some highlights of personnel changes. We have 28 retirements of, for instructional staff this year. We will be losing 21 teachers and seven teaching assistants to retirement. We have a net decrease in this budget of three elementary teachers due to decreasing enrollment. However, we have more than enough retirements in that area to compensate for that. And I will add that there is the ability in this budget for us to continue to monitor the enrollment for elementary classes and make adjustments if things change during the summer. In addition, we're increasing a school psychologist position so that we can have two full-time psychologists at each of our middle schools. Definitely needed to help with the mental and social, emotional well-being of our students. And the next line talks about consultant teachers, which you may or may not be familiar with that concept. We have a consultant teacher program where we provide very intense work with our probationary teachers, our newest teachers. And next, this coming year, we are going to have over 100 teachers that are in their first four years of employment. And so they will require the work of a consultant teacher working directly with them. Because that number is so high, we need two additional teachers in that consultant teacher model. I mentioned the art, health, and family and consumer science at the junior high. We also have an increase in enrollment of students who are English language learners. And so it's necessary for us to add on an additional English language learner teacher. And we do have a net increase of two additional special education teachers built into this budget.
We show this slide every year. This is the slide that shows expenditure per pupil and compares North Syracuse to the other districts in our OCM BOCES. Again, the other 22 schools that were on that tax charter are listed here by spending per pupil. And North Syracuse is ranked 655th out of 677 districts and ranked 21 out of 23 here in central New York. And our spending per pupil is, is relatively low, primarily due to the fact that the district does not receive the foundation aid that was required, is required by law and formulas that, that determine the distribution of aid across the state. The, the other factor in the interest of full disclosure is that we're a large district. Because we're a large district, we leverage our fixed costs well so that we have one superintendent spread over 8,500 students as opposed to, with a smaller district, you'd have certain key positions spread over a much lower population. Having said that, the primary reason we spend less per pupil is that we get less per pupil due to the, the lower foundation aid. We're very proud of our bus fleet. We have 135 buses on the road. We triple-trip our kids, meaning the fleet goes out and gets the high school and junior high students. Then it goes and gets the middle school students. And then it goes and services the six elementary schools. And in order to have an on-time, reliable, safe fleet, our objective is not to have too many buses on the road that are over 10 years old. In order to do that, we need to systematically replace buses. The district has been running this very successful program for a number of years where we purchase buses each year, and we auction off the older buses after they're off warranty and they're more expensive to maintain and tend to be less reliable. So we're gonna buy about the same number of buses as we bought last year for a little less money. 15 vehicles, $1.5 million. The cost is $1.82 per, for $100,000 home before STAR. The district has a fund balance, and it's important to understand the district's fund balance. That's our savings account. New York State would like a school, each school district to have 4% in their fund balance. We closed the year last year at 3.99%. So we were, we've made a lot of progress in this year, in this, in this area. We, it wasn't long ago that the district was a district under fiscal stress and had less than a 2% fund balance. And so we're, we're very happy to report that our, our savings account is in good shape. How does money get into the savings account? Well, every year when we put a budget together, I wish I could say that we were perfectly accurate on every line item in the budget, but sometimes we have a cold winter and we spend more money. Or sometimes our fuel costs for our fleet is higher than we expect. You know, sometimes we have to hire students, or hire teachers to service special needs students that move into the district. So we, we need to build contingencies into our budget. But whenever we don't spend the full budget, whatever's left goes into the fund balance. And so we're estimating that for the '17-'18 school year, $1.5 million will go into the fund balance. And the board knows that. So when the board approves the budget, the board says, hey, let's recognize the fact that every year we spend less than the budget, and let's take some money out of our savings and use that in supporting the next year's budget. That's the $2.4 million you see coming out. So we estimate that at the end of this year, net of those two items, that we'll have around $5.5 million in our fund balance, which represents about 3.3% of our budget. Again, these are preliminary numbers because we haven't closed the books yet for the, for the 2017-'18 school year. We do have reserves. These are monies set aside for specific liabilities such as tax surcharge. Tax surcharge reserve is made up of monies that have been set aside based on a specific list of commercial properties that, where the owners have expressed an interest in having their assessments reduced. And whenever those assessments are reduced, the district's in a position where we need to potentially refund school taxes. And we need to have that reserved for. The same thing with workman's compensation. We're self-insured. We have 1,400 employees. If someone gets hurt on the job, we want to make sure we have the funds to cover their lost time and pay for their medical expenses. We have a general liability reserve, and we also have a capital reserve. Capital reserve was, was established to deal with capital projects. And that $2.5 million will be used primarily for the Bear Road construction project, which is scheduled to start in the summer of 2019.
So in summary, this budget did show an increase in foundation aid, but we continue to be concerned that we're receiving less foundation aid than the formula set out by the state has projected over the years. And we continue to work with our legislators on that. The tax levy increase is at the tax cap, 2.94% as Mr. Keegan explained. And this budget will require one more, no, one more yes vote than a no vote and a simple majority to pass the budget. In addition, we continue to rely on our fund balance, and we are concerned about that and continue to watch the fund balance. Many of you remember that, starting back in, like, in 2009, when the economy had such issues, we had to cut many sports teams and co-curricular clubs. And many of those were cut. Many of them continued to function based on fundraising efforts through the Booster Clubs and the North Syracuse Education Foundation. We were, in, over the last couple of years, we've sort of chunked and been able to put some of those opportunities back in. We were hopeful that we were going to be able to put in the last group with this budget. However, we were not able to do so. We are, however, adding the one modified volleyball team that I mentioned so that our students have the same opportunities as other students in our area. We talked about the fact that this budget does have an increase, a net increase of six positions that focus on our areas of focus in Vision 2020 and hopefully to best meet the needs of our students. And last but not least on here, we're extremely proud of the fact that this budget does not have any layoffs.
So the, tonight is the budget hearing, May 1st, and our budget vote is on May 15th. The polling places are the usual places, Cicero L., for those that live north of 481, and the district office here, for those that live south of 481. We ran a special registration session tonight, which will continue until 8 o'clock at both locations. And we'll have, the ballot will show, as Mr. Schuster indicated earlier, that we've got four seats for board members. And we'll have a proposition for the Salina Free Library in the amount of $445,474.
And just as we started this presentation with students, we're ending the presentation focusing on our students who have had great accomplishments this year. For the first time ever, our varsity football team won the section championship. We're extremely proud of them. And I'm sure by now, most of you are aware that our marching band will be headed to the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade this coming November. And they not only won New York State competition, but they have received national recognition. And again, I have to comment that their travels are all based on fundraising because the travel costs are not directly included in this budget. But we're, we're very proud of them. And so, in a moment, we're gonna switch to questions and answers. But before we do that, I'd like to mention a couple of things. I'm sure that, first of all, it's nice to see a crowd in here tonight because typically, we do these budget hearings, and there's very few people that show an interest in come. So we're pleased to see so many of you here tonight. I realize, however, that most of you are here because you have questions about another issue that's not directly related to this budget. So we are going to be prepared to talk about that and clarify information that was sent out in the two community and staff letters recently about our building aid issue. But before we kind of switch over to that, because the issues are separate, I would like to start by asking, are there any questions pertaining to the slides that you just saw for this year's budget proposal and what's included in it for opportunities for students? So we'd like to start there and get those questions answered. So we'd like to start there and get those questions answered, and then I will talk about the, we will talk about the building aid issue and answer questions related to that. So anything about this year's budget? And I would ask that if you do, you come up and speak into the mic, because this is being recorded, and the folks at home will only be able to hear if we speak into the microphones. So any questions about what's, what we've gone over? Not even one.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. DeFlorio, can you come up and speak into the mic?
Hi, my name is Bob DeFlorio. I'm a resident. The question I have is, what percent is for direct instruction of that total budget?
In our dispatch...
I did read it, but I wasn't quite clear.
No, that's okay. No, we, it's, I'm glad you're asking this question. It's a good, it's a good question. We're required by law to put together what's called a three-part budget.
Yes.
And the, the, the program expenditures that are directly related to instruction are 78.87% of the budget.
Okay, thanks. I, I wasn't quite sure. Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions pertaining to the 1819 budget? Oh, come right ahead, please. Yeah, and please state your name and ask your question.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Nash. I'm a taxpayer and a grandmother of two children in this district, and I'm a retired Syracuse City school teacher. Okay, I've got a great passion here. Our superintendent and our Board of Education members have worked very hard to get resource officers in this district. They've got the high school covered, they've got the middle school covered, the junior high covered. However, we still need resource officers in six elementary schools. So I've been trying to brainstorm, and I, I just want to throw this out to the board and to the superintendent. If we, we need coverage from May until June. We've already had two threats, one the junior high and one the senior high. It's too close to home. We got to do something. Okay, if we were able to get some resources out of this budget for just three resource officers to cover six schools, one, on one day, they do it in the morning, in the afternoon, then the next day, switch, but just have three officers. I'd like to see those six elementary schools covered with some money somewhere in this budget from now until June. I don't want to take a chance on anybody losing their life. Thank you.
So I can start by addressing that. We do have a school resource officer at the high school and at the junior high, but currently we have one split between two of the middle schools. And so we are in some negotiations with the Onondah County Sheriff's Department to try to increase that so that the middle schools are, are definitely covered. But beyond that, we are really, and I know that we've been working with you with, with CACCO's office in terms of waiting for the information to be able to apply for the grants with federal monies that are going to become available. So we look forward to hopefully being able to, to take advantage of that.
Anybody else with regard to the budget presentation? Phil?
Hi, my name's Phil Cleary. I'm a resident, and I'm also a teacher in the district. I, I wanted to thank Ms. Beach for the comments about this hearing, that for those of you who come to these every year, you know that the room is usually filled with only people you can count on one hand. And doing this work requires participation. And what we see behind us is participation. People are showing up, they have questions, they have concerns, they might be happy, they might be, might be angry. But the message is that the place we are right now dictates participation, and specifically that means voting for our budget, supporting our bus bonding bill, electing a school board that will help us move forward, and continuing that, not just today, not just on May 15th, but after that, showing up at board meetings, voting in regular elections, coming to budget meetings. Democracy dies in darkness, as they say, and it's time for all of us to pay more attention, ask more questions, and engage in the conversation so that we can make our district the best it can be. So I will be voting yes on the budget. I will be supporting the bus bonding bill, and I'll be supporting the three candidates that I know will really help us. And I hope everybody else learns all they need to so they can get out and take part. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
If I can take a moment to introduce, one more Board of Ed candidate has come in, in the back. Mike Donofio is, is back there for everybody, so thank you. Anything else about the budget? Okay, so we'll open it up now to, Ned, do you want to lead off?
Sure.
Thank you.
So before we open it to questions, I kind of feel the need to just give you the abbreviated version of the problem that's facing us, so that I can hopefully clarify maybe some of the information that was in the letter. So trying to remain factual here, there is this thing called a final cost report that is a piece of paper that needs to be submitted to the State Education Department at the completion of every building project or renovation project that's previously been approved. So on December 29th of 2015, I received some paperwork from the State Education Department, and I thought I was reading it wrong. I thought there's no way that this could be possible. It said that our district had a $50.8 million penalty for 23 projects that had this piece of paperwork that was outstanding, outstanding, had either been submitted late or not submitted at all. So at that point, they didn't tell us that this was completely accurate. The directions that came with it said, you know, we're kind of not really sure about this. You need to research this and verify how much of this is accurate or not accurate. So at that point, we began to work on the problem. Before we alarmed the public, we wanted to make sure that we knew exactly what we were talking about and what was real and what was not real. So out of those 23 projects, we were able to get 17 of them off the books, so to speak, so that we were able to prove that either because there was litigation involved with some of these projects or other factors, that their information was not completely accurate, and those 17 projects were okay. There were six remaining projects. Of those six, let me, let me also back up and say that the projects were from the years of 1996 through 2010. So some of them went back 20 years. Of those six, one of them was never given the opportunity for what they call amnesty or a forgiveness program, just because they made changes with this law that I'm sure these two gentlemen can speak more clearly to in detail than, than I can, because they're more involved with it. The law changed, and there was a program called an amnesty program where you could apply for forgiveness to make things go away. One of them, because of the way it was dated, never qualified. The other five were never put on the list from the State Education Department to say to us, here's a list of outstanding projects, here's the timeframe where the law says you can apply for forgiveness. They weren't on there. We had no way of knowing, no one ever communicated from the State Education Department all those years. And there was a disclaimer at the bottom of their website that says, we're not fully responsible. So we went to work with our legislators, being told that legislation was the only way to get those remaining six changed. And through the first legislative cycle last year, and I do want to add that our local legislators have been incredibly, incredibly involved. And I cannot say enough about the attention that we've gotten from Assemblyman Sterpi and Assemblywoman Hunter and Senator DeFrancisco and Senator Valesky. And through their efforts, we were able to get some of this reduced last budget cycle. However, we were never informed of when the first payment was going to be due. It was put off for at least another whole year, so we knew we had another opportunity to go back and say, can we work on getting this further reduced, which we did this time? And that has resulted in a $1.9 million penalty for 10 years with the remaining of about $10 million being forgiven. We're still not 100% clear, because we have not been able to get the State Education Department to answer our attempts to the question of, is this first payment really due this June? However, informally, through our legislators, we've been told that that is most likely the case. So at this point, we felt it was the time to let people know that we were in this situation, and let's gather together and figure out what we can do to hopefully further eliminate this, this problem. So I don't know, did I leave out any of the pertaining facts? I think that kind of sums up where we are, and we can talk about where we're hoping to go next with this and how you can help. But first, let's open it up to questions, and I'm going to sit back down, because some of the questions these folks can answer even in more detail than I'm able to.
Mr. DeFlorio, please come forward again. Yeah, we want, we want to make sure your voice is heard on the recording.
Question I have is, did the district benefit in any way financially by not reporting? No? No.
No, we did not.
So it's the usual State Education Department nonsense, is what it is.
All the projects in question, the six projects, were completed on time, within budget, and within specification. The way the law used to work is that school districts got the aid, whether they filed the final cost report or not. And then if you didn't file it on time, one day late, you lost all the aid. It was a crazy law, and even the state recognized that, and in 2011, they changed the law.
They changed it. Well, they changed a lot of laws as it progresses. And I think the problem is you get caught up in that, that you don't know when or where it's going to happen. And I think, for me, I wouldn't pay them. Personally, I wouldn't pay them.
No choice there, Bob, they, they take it.
No, I don't know. I, I don't know. You know, our legislators work hard, I agree, but you didn't receive any monies at all from any of those? You didn't get any extra money? You didn't get...
No benefit to the district.
Just, just the basic aid, that's all we got.
Okay, that's too bad. I, I just...
In the way it's worked, in most of these, they've given us the aid, now they want us to take it back, they want to take it away, take it back.
Of course, yeah, of course. Well, I, I, you did the right thing. People shouldn't be blaming you. They shouldn't be blaming the district unless it was, unless it was just a, a, a real error, that someone just forgot to do something. But I just don't, I, I think I fight it.
We're doing the best we can, believe me, yeah.
No, I know, it's complicated, it's a mess. I would say to hell with it, let it go.
Mr. Corolla?
Good evening, I'm John Corolla. I'm a parent. I'm a lifelong community member and graduate of North Syracuse, and I'm the Teacher Association President. Very, very specifically, there are three points of, of fault here. Some is with the district in terms of, of the process. The other portion of this falls with a third-party vendor, whether it's an accountant firm or the construction companies that you're utilizing. And the third part's the state. You know, so we can all point fingers and we can say, this is where it lies, and who's going to take the lion's share? But when you look at a $1.9 million debt spread out every year over 10 years, my three children go to this district, I have a senior, a junior, and a sophomore. I have nephews and nieces that will be attending shortly. And I know so many of the teachers that I represent, we value the district and we value the programming that we provide for our kids. It's, it's, you know, beyond compare in our perspective. The people that will take the hit for this, for those three areas, are our children. My children and the children of the community, as we start to, year after year, and we've seen this happen from 2009 on, where we start to dismantle our programs and our sports programs, things that kids need to really be whole children. And I'm really imploring not only all of you, but the people in the audience and as well as the people that will be listening in the news, that this is a conversation that we have to have with our governor and our legislators, because this is not a partisan issue. When we, when we look at a law that is set up that damages children in the long run, it's a bad law. And as a community, we need to not stand for that and speak up for what our kids need. And I, for one, I will, I will not be silent. I will be dogged on this and, and repeat myself over and over and over. I had asked the governor to come to North Syracuse to learn about us and learn about our kids and learn about our programs. I called the other day and I got a partial message back saying, someone will be getting in touch with me. I don't know when that will be. I do know that Senator DeFrancisco has been outstanding, El Sterpi, Dave Valesky, Pam Hunter, they all have come to the table, but until they work in concert and they're all looking at the same issue in the same way, that we must provide a sound, basic education for children without limiting their opportunities and growth for a New York State citizenry, that's where we're going to succeed. So to that end, I have letters, templates for the governor, and self-addressed envelopes. So if anybody after the meeting wants to see me, I purposely wore bright orange, so you can find me, if that, if the white hair wasn't enough. But I do want to express the concern, and I know that you've worked very hard, but look, no one here is sure of the responsibility of where the errors are. I just refuse to allow my children and the other children in the Syracuse community to take ownership of an adult problem. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, John.
Anybody else in the back? Come forward, sir, please. Introduce yourselves.
Sam D'Amico, I'm a resident.
Okay.
Okay. We have nine members of the board who are elected by taxpayers. Two budgets went through, no mention from any of those elected officials of this problem. They went to our legislators. They never told a taxpayer that this was in a cloud over our school district. We just got notice of elections. There's four seats available. Five people are running. Four are incumbents. This wasn't brought out until after the deadline was over for anybody wanting to run on the board. So if the taxpayers weren't happy with the way this was handled, because they were kept in the dark until the last minute, they were also kept in the dark until after the candidates had been chosen. And for the positions that are available, there's four people that are running for reelection. There's three, there's three for three years, and there's an open seat for one year. There's five people running. And the way I read it, four people are going to serve on the board. One person isn't. Four of the five are already serving on the board. That's what I read in, I'm just basing on what the literature that was sent to my house on the, on this. The other thing was, I received a budget in the mail as a taxpayer, but I didn't receive any letter explaining this. I still haven't received a letter explaining this. And all I get is on the news. If I go on the news, I find out about it. Same with somebody in Manalius in another school district found out the same time I did. I'm not here to criticize what you do for the school district. I'm here to criticize that this thing was buried for two years, and you've got all sorts of reasons why you didn't tell us, but I think you should have been upfront with the taxpayers from the beginning, so they had an idea this was going on. And if you wanted to have a movement to go to our legislators and our governor, then we should have started this two years ago, not after the penalty has been. We're at $1.9 million taken out of our funds, and now you want us to contact the governor? I just think it should have been handled a little better. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Other questions, comments? Jackie?
I'm Jackie Forte. I'm a parent in the district, I'm a volunteer in the district, and I also work with the North Syracuse Education Foundation. One of the things that I find interesting about this is that we all pay taxes to many different places in this state. We pay taxes to our school district, our local community, we pay taxes to our county, our state, and our federal government. And back when we approved these projects, I voted yes, and I agreed to pay my share of my school taxes and also my share of my state taxes to cover this project, all these projects. And I find it unusual now that the state's asking to take back that aid... And I find it unusual now that the state's asking to take back that aid money that was designated to a project that I covered in good faith with my vote and with my tax payments to multiple sources, and then they're technically going to be asking us to pay this a second time by funding this $1.9 million for the next nine years, when frankly, I feel like we already funded it through our school taxes on the one hand and our state taxes on the other. So where I feel there's a discrepancy, and there were errors made on the part of the district, and I think you've admitted to those, but where is the admission on the part of the state? Why did they continue to give money to multiple districts, not just North Syracuse School District, without seeing that the projects were being completed properly? And then how can you call back state tax dollars from taxpayers like ourselves, everybody here, who's already paid them in? And what are you going to do with that money that you take back? Are you going to give it to my community somewhere else when you ask me to then go forward and pay for it again? So I think that one of the strongest arguments for the state to work with the district to forgive these errors is the fact that I think there's onus on both sides as to these oversights, and the fact that you guys were not in your positions at the time that these errors occurred, and Governor Cuomo was not in office at the time that these errors occurred. You could both sit down at the table and say, look, these were oversights made by our predecessors. We've done our best. There was no embezzling of funds. Every project was completed accurately. It was completed on time, and it was completed for the benefit of the public education of our kids. So that's what I'm hoping that we'll see going forward. And one of the things that I wanted to ask Don is that, in the event that we have to come up with this funding for additional years, can you explain to the community what the impact of that could look like to the district? Because my understanding is that we're not going to actually send money to the state. The state's just going to take money out of our aid. So what's that going to look like?
We get our state aid payments electronically paid to the district throughout the year, and what they're saying is they're going to take $1.9 million a year from our June payment. And again, as Superintendent Speech said, we haven't even gotten that in writing yet from the state. They haven't even fully processed this law so that they could send us a letter and say, here's how it's going to work. But we believe, starting this June, we'll get $1.9 million taken out of our aid payments. It's our intention in the short term to take that money out of the fund balance, and so I want to be clear that this budget, or any budget in the short-term future, we have no plans, intentions to include any money to cover this penalty. We would take the money out of fund balance, but our fund balance is not limitless, as you folks saw. It's currently a little over $6 million, so that means we could basically make three payments out of the fund balance. And, you know, we hope that there'll be a legislative solution before we have to exhaust our fund balance.
Can you explain to everybody here, too, what is the impact to the district if we deplete our fund balance to a level substantially lower than the recommended 4%?
Well, the purpose of the fund balance is to provide insurance for the district and the taxpayers and the students and our programs, our staff, so that if any one cost or several costs start to spike, we can create a soft landing. We can use fund balance to address needs that the district has, you know, while we work through that difficult time, you know? And I think historically, the district has not had adequate fund balance to do that. We currently have a fund balance that, at 4%, allows us to ride through any foreseeable storm, and frankly, such as this penalty in the short term. We hope that we'll be able to find a legislative solution. If we don't, it will have negative consequences on programming.
My understanding is, based on things I've read in the budget, that the extracurricular and co-curricular activities cost about $1.5 million a year?
In total.
In total. So even if we eliminated every single co-curricular and extracurricular activity that there was known to man, we still wouldn't meet that penalty?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we happen... I, for one, will vote yes for this budget, and I'm going to recommend strongly to my friends that they vote yes for this budget, because I understand the long-term impact. But if, for some reason, the budget did go down, and it went down twice, because I know you're allowed to put it up twice, what would happen possibly to the district?
Yeah, so the... As everyone knows, the budget can get voted on two times, once in May and once in June. If it fails twice, our levy would be the same levy as we have in the '17, '18 school year, the $85 million levy. Now, we can't tell people how to vote, but as you saw on the slides tonight, our levy increase is $2.5 million. So if we did not get the levy increase this year, the district would lose $2.5 million a year forever. It would be far worse than any penalty that is imposed by New York State. It would have catastrophic implications on our programming. We're living under the tax cap. We're only asking the taxpayers to cover inflation in this budget, basically, and so that's what our budget's all about. So it would be catastrophic if the budget went down.
Thank you for answering my questions. And all I would say to everybody in our district who doesn't attend your meetings regularly is that you're very open to having people come. I come to as many as I can, and there's extra committees and activities that people can participate in so that they can learn about these things and have a better understanding. Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. Please come forward, Mr. Nash.
My name is Jim Nash, and I'm a resident. I'm an official taxpayer, and I have two grandchildren in the district. Have any of you contacted the previous superintendents to get their side of the story? And what did they say? Did they say they didn't know anything about this? Did they say, well, yeah, we knew it, but for one reason or another, we didn't realize there was a penalty? What were some of the explanations that they gave? That's all I'm interested in.
So, yes, we did contact people that were here during those years that are retired and still living. They were as shocked as we were when we received the notification. They had never been notified of any sort of late penalty. Were never under the impression that anything had been done that wasn't in accordance with what was supposed to be done.
If I may piggyback on a couple of the comments, we are not the only district in this boat. There are about a dozen districts right now in the state of New York that are facing penalties for the same reason. We happen to be the biggest player in the game. But there are other districts who are all part of the same legislative initiative with their senators, with their assemblymen, trying to get the legislation through both Senate and Assembly to the governor to grant forgiveness to all these districts. So I don't want you to think that we're alone in this. We've got company, but it's not a good place to have company, but at least we've got it. So again, it wasn't just North Syracuse. It's a much more widespread problem than that. The other thing I'd like to, again, piggyback on what Don had mentioned in terms of the budget, we've seen some of the email trails that are out there where the vote no on the budget and send them a message, vote no on the budget and hold them accountable, vote no on the budget so they'll know how angry we are. I'll go back to the comments made earlier. A defeated budget penalizes students, not adults, students. That's all a defeated budget will do, is create another $2.5 million loss of revenue on top of the $1.9 million. So I would ask you, in your communications, whatever with your friends, emphasize the fact, we adults have heard the message. We know what happened. We know it was a lot of parties to blame, whether, as John said, you've got the state, you've got the district, you've got others. We don't need another message about how upset people are. We know that. We're upset. So I would ask you to stress to your folks that a defeated budget will punish the children for the failures of other adults at an earlier time. So please, send that to those folks, if you would. Anything else? Any other comments, questions? Yes, come forward. Tony?
Good evening. My name is Toni Broccoli, and I am a resident here in North Syracuse. I sat on the Board of Education during that time period, and, you know, I know I'm listening to the comments about how folks were notified or that questions came up about what we knew, when we knew, how we knew. And as a person who was sitting on the board at that time, I was not notified about this. I do not... I have the same answers as the rest of the community, and therefore, I feel like it just needs to be clarified that when you talk about administration, you're talking about the people who were paid to be sitting, and that the Board of Education that was sitting during these times are just as much in the dark as everybody else is. And so, you know, I feel a little stressed sitting back there and feeling like we should have known, we didn't do our due diligence, maybe we didn't look close enough. I sat on the Audit Committee. Did I miss something? And not knowing or not being communicated with makes it that much harder. I'm not saying that you should breach confidentiality or put the district in a place that would penalize us for sharing too much information before you could, but in the same instance, understand that there were nine people sitting there for each year that those budgets were passed that thought they were doing the right thing and found out later, much later, that these things happened. So it's a little disconcerting to hear and to be kind of having your hands tied, not knowing that it could have been you that could have made a difference, and yet you didn't.
I'll just try to alleviate that a little, Tony. Most of these late reports, and I want to say, there were dozens of reports filed on time for projects. It was this handful that, for whatever reasons, didn't get filed. But the late filings were from 2003, '04, '05. It took the state of New York, State Education Department, until 2015 to figure out that these reports from '10, '11, '12 years earlier were not on time. So it's not like that people knew, anybody knew this was late. Even the state itself, State Ed Department, didn't realize it until 2015, when they looked back, for whatever reason, and said, oh, you missed these reports 10, 11, 12 years ago.
Right.
So there was nobody to tell you at that time that anything was wrong, because nobody internally here or in those other districts realized it.
Correct. But I'm speaking about now.
Now, okay.
When the letter went out to the community, I received one. When the letter went out to the teachers, I didn't realize they got one as well. A simple little letter to the people who were sitting on the board during that time, expressing that there's an issue, we're looking at it, we can't share certain information, but it wasn't anything that you would have known or, you know, anything to word it so that at least I'm not sitting there in the audience and the other people that were sitting at that time get it at the same time. It feels like we weren't even respected enough to say, we understand your due diligence. It wasn't anything you could have done differently. That's my only point.
That's a good point, Tony.
And for the community to understand that there isn't anything we couldn't have done, because even sitting here tonight, I'm not sure that there isn't anything we could have done differently.
There was nothing you could have done, yeah.
I appreciate that.
We know that, yeah.
I also want to add...
And your points, we'll take.
You mentioned that you were on the Audit Committee.
Correct.
I think we will go on record here in saying that another added factor here is that the auditors never picked this up, and we're no longer using those auditors.
Right. I understand the letters in that point that say, we're no longer using those people, but it didn't state that they wouldn't have known it anyway. So me, sitting as someone who was sitting on the Audit Committee, I'm thinking, okay, what did we miss? What should I have seen?
You didn't miss anything.
You didn't miss anything on the Audit Committee.
I appreciate that.
No, you're good, Tony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before we adjourn? No, I see two hands. Come up, sir, in the red shirt. Name, please.
Okay, I'm Will Schmarter. I moved into the district about less than a year ago. Obviously, a number of the residents are very concerned about this. What sort of commitments and proactive measures are you looking to be taking to ensure this does not happen again?
As we said earlier, the state of New York State Ed Department realized what a problem this was, so in 2011, the law was changed. There's no such thing as a late report anymore.
Okay.
Can't happen.
Okay, so you're not going to, like, add new auditors or double checks?
No, there's nothing... No, there's no late reports anymore.
Okay.
The whole system changed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Appreciate your question. Another hand in the bag. Sir?
My name is Christian Suarez. I'm a parent. We just moved from Chinango. I'm also an educator for the past 16 years. I have a legal question for you guys. The federal government says that you cannot deny funds for special education students. So if we do not are able to pay $2 million for the next 10 years, you're going to have to do cuts, special ed teachers, different programs. Can then you guys sue the federal government because you are denying, and it's the state law 200, that you cannot deny a student with needs from services? So is that something that you guys have thought about?
I have to say, like you're thinking. We haven't actually thought about it in that way. You put a different spin on it. But I have to say that, you know, we are having some discussion in any and all options in terms of legally, you know, what is available to us. So that is a new twist that, you know, we'll take into consideration.
As a special ed teacher, I know that they're saying things, you cannot exclude students.
Correct.
Basically, the government's telling you guys, sucks to be you, figure it out something.
Pretty much.
So that's something you guys might want to think about, because right now, you have 1,200 students with special needs.
Yep.
Yes.
Some students are being sent to Bosse's because of the special program they have. So right now, we're looking at cutting... I'm not saying you are, but in the future, we're looking at cutting not just special ed teachers, TAs, who are mandated by law to support the student in the classroom, in behavioral classrooms, one to ones. So that's something that you might want to bring it up to your legal department and figure it out.
Yes. You've put a different spin on this, and we're certainly willing to ask some questions.
And it's the state law 200, just in case.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm Dave Traub. Taxpayer in the district. I had three children come to the district. I'm pleased to be this my first board meeting that I've watched in person. I actually watched it online a few times, very good technology. My question is, so I'm disappointed, first of all, that I didn't see any of our legislators here. I'm happy to hear that they've been trying to help us out. I'm disappointed they're not here, and I was wondering if there would be an opportunity available for us to meet with the legislators, to discuss the issue with them. So from my understanding, there's a law, there was change in 2011. The Board of Education came back after the law was changed and looked for wrongdoings that occurred prior to the law's changing. So I wonder, you know, do they have a lot of free time on their hands? Are they able to do this? Are we paying them too much out there? But besides that, can we get our legislators here so we can address it with them and see what additional action they're taking? Because this is something that it sounds like, because it's a law, there really no other options than having the law changed.
Exactly. Exactly. That is it.
So I don't think that they're here tonight for a couple of reasons. Number one, well, we actually talked to one of them today, and I know that we've made contact with the others this week as well, but I believe they're in Albany, still in session. But in addition to that, tonight, the purpose of tonight really was supposed to just be the budget hearing, but, you know, obviously, we knew that this issue needed to be addressed, and we welcome the opportunity, and again, are appreciative of the fact that you're all here so that you can walk away with more knowledge about the situation. But I'm not opposed to, in our conversations with them as we move forward, attempting to get something together if we think that that's what it might take to help us. And I want to stress as well, it can't hurt to continue to talk with them, certainly, And I want to stress as well, it can't hurt to continue to talk with them, certainly, and we have plans to continue to do that, but we really believe it's necessary for us to somehow reach the governor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?[1756.13][1756.13](Applause). Okay, all right, then we will adjourn the meeting. And again, thank you all for coming. Remind you of the vote two weeks from today, May 15. And again, if you have other additional questions, you can reach the superintendent via email or Don via email, or even me. We'll do everything we can to get you the information you want. Again, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.[1782.26][1782.26](Clerk knocking on door).
I wonder if they got my good side on Channel 9. Leave that there for a minute while I look down.